Life is located in. They're already selling the. Okay. Personally. The business people. And continue to let your library to. We recognize and offer our gratitude for their charitable teachings both the earth and culture. All of these teachings through our interactions today and every day thereafter. Thank them for sharing this land with us. We commit to ongoing learnings about our cultural identity as celebrated, represented and honored, as well as the inclusion of indigenous perspectives into action. No glitch. Thank you. Been called to order and we'll have a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda?
Moved by councillor Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. Be it resolved that the agenda of the regular meeting of council held on Tuesday, June 7th, 2022 be approved as circulated.
Oh, okay. Motion carry. Any background issues between the area interests? Noted. Petitions, petitions and delegations, ones. Acceptance of minutes and recommendations.
Moved by councillor Lad Shaba, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. Be it resolved that council approve the minutes of the following meeting. Minutes of the regular meeting of council held May 17th, 2022.
All in favor? Motion carry. Reports of municipal officers in communications. Verbal, CEO Alan Smith.
Uh, bringing worship to the council. Um, I attended the inauguration of Northern Ontario municipalities from May 9th to 11th. Uh, along with councillor Shaba and Mayor. I'm not going to give a deep overview of the entire conference. As councillor Shaba provided his thorough review that overview of the previous, at the previous council meeting. It very well focused on two speakers that I found very interesting. The first speaker, who is an author and creative client consultant, Doug Griffith. Reviews this book, Thirteen Ways to Kill Your Community. This book was written for small-time residents with a desire to make a difference in their community. But who aren't quite sure what to do or feel they are isolated or alone in the challenges they face. The author traveled extensively throughout rural areas and a member of the White House Assembly. Writing a rural development strategy for the problem. A better experience about thirteen ways to kill a community, describing the power small communities have to change the future. He stated that the ironic theme of his book is he found that rural communities tend to be the homework enemy. Even though residents and community leadership have been intentioned, the optic action or adopt attitude that holds the community back. The speaker set out a map to act in that. The attitude and actions undermine the development of communities and present no way to grab attention. The thirteen ways to kill a community are: don't have cold water, don't attract business, ignore your youth, feed yourself above your real needs or values, stop elsewhere, don't think, don't cooperate, live in the past, ignore your seniors, reject everything new, ignore outsiders, become complacent, you don't take responsibility. In discussion on ignore your youth, the speaker asked, did there's an exception applying for council or local government position in your community? He mentioned that two hundred and fifty communities had business and travels, only one has an explicit exception plan. This community also has an elected youth that shadows town council and is engaging the political process with the aim of encouraging youth to run for council. I find this approach to quite interesting to get youth involved in local government and the political process. The speaker also stated, if you replace the word youth with the word future and do the same thing again, ignore your future. After mentioning that substitution, it becomes quite a lot harder to show your shoulders and be able to define. The second advanced speaker I'm asking was George Cao King. Um, presented on cultural mindfulness, he is the Red Hill Hawk Training Consultant Firm. Uh, dark how she lives on the Nuthemis, First Nation. So the thirty-three years of police experience, including twelve years deciding, going to award winning, making the winner's training program initiatives. Uh, his presentation, he used personal stories and humor to approach subtle issues. Uh, companies like Northland retain coaching to undergo cultural sensitivity training. For executives, as councillor Shaba mentioned in his update last council meeting. Something that the next council may consider undertaking. Overall conference as national figures, although also big networking opportunity.
Thank you. You know, Emma.
Moved by councillor Lad Shaba, seconded by councillor Stacey White. Be it resolved that verbal report entitled twenty twenty-two Phenom Conference Update be received for information.
All in favor? Motion carry. The six point two. Provides a high committee members of reference. My turn.
Um, thank you through you and good evening, members of council. Uh, to summarize this memo, as uh, the municipal election is only a few months away. Local area clerks are legislatively required to present the proposed terms of reference for approval by their respective councils in accordance with the Municipal Elections Act. The Tamiskamang District Compliance Audit Committee's role is to receive, review and make decisions on applications for compliance audits related to municipal election campaigns and expenses of candidates and third parties. Uh, including in any by-election in the term of, uh, the next term of council, which is twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six. Uh, at a high level, since council's direction in February to encourage the collaboration of the district. Um, uh, the Tamiskamang District municipalities. Uh, all area municipalities are participating, uh, including the municipality of Tamogme. Uh, the town of Kirkland Lake would only be physically responsible for any compliance audits for candidates or, uh, third parties relative to the town. Uh, to administration's knowledge, there's been no audit requests in the previous three election cycles. Uh, the group intends to circulate the advertisement for membership in the local newspaper, local newspapers for five members, so that's three appointments and two alternates, as per the criteria in the terms of reference. And applications will be streamlined for the district by my office. Uh, administrative procedures are currently being drafted and will be vetted by the area clerks prior to nomination date. And a condensed area working group has been struck to review interested application submissions. This working group will then report back to all the district clerks and then we'll, we'll in turn report back to their respective councils for the recommendations on appointments. Uh, the committee must be in place by October first, as per the Municipal Elections Act. Those are my comments.
Move.
I'll have to read the recommendation. Sorry, excuse me. Uh, moved by councillor Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by councillor Lad Shaba. Be it resolved as a memorandum, that memorandum number twenty twenty-two CLK zero thirteen entitled Tamiskamang District Joint Compliance Audit Committee Terms of Reference be received. And finally, that council approves the Tamiskamang District Joint Compliance Audit Committee Terms of Reference and direct that a bylaw be brought forward for three readings at the June 7th, 2022 meeting.
All in favor? Motion carry. And the six point two, providing a long as the bylaw.
Okay, thank you through you. To briefly summarize this memo, for the purposes of enhanced accountability and transparency to the public staff, uh, for staff ease of use and in keeping with changing legislative requirements. Housekeeping amendments are being proposed to the town of Kirkland Lake's notice bylaw, specifically adding definitions, removing very detailed manners of notice that evolve with legislative reform. Clarifying the requirement of notice for the annual budget process and amendments. Uh, identifying the requirements of notice of the passage of user fees and charges. Uh, including the omission of the legislative requirement for, uh, the form and manner of notice under the Ontario Building Code Act and respective regulations. And lastly, the inclusion of notice for the closing, altering or naming of a municipal road in the municipality. So if the proposed is adopted, the annual budget adoption and water and wastewater rates will see a seven-day notice period on our website and social media platforms. User fees, service charges will require a public meeting and will be subject to a fourteen-day notice minimum or a twenty-one day notice if changes are being made that are outlined in the Ontario Building Code Act and those respective regulations. So that's the Ontario Building Code. Uh, permanently closing or altering a highway, which is a municipal road, will require a fourteen-day notice period. Now, this section is separate and apart from the routine road closing notifications that you're currently being, you're currently seeing on our current, um, town's social media feeds. And staff identified that the bylaw that was presented as part of the report, uh, omitted, uh, was omitted as part of the agenda package itself. So there will be a motion on the floor requesting an amendment for the bylaw to be read three times at the June twenty-first meeting. My comments.
Any comments? No?
I have to do the definition. Moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Patrick Adams. Be it resolved that memorandum number twenty twenty-two CLK fourteen entitled Updates to the Bylaw describing the form, manner and times for the provision of notice be received. And that council adopt the recommendations as, as set out in the report. And finally, that council directed the proposed notice bylaw be brought forward for three readings at the June 7th, 2022 meeting.
All in favor?
Hold on, I gotta read the notice, the motion on the floor. There's a motion on the floor, moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Patrick Adams. Be it resolved that the last paragraph of the recommendations be substituted with the following. And finally, that council direct that the proposed notice policy bylaw be brought forward for three readings at the June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Any questions? All in favor? Six point four. Kirkland Lake Police Service Board of Recommendations on Foss Lane. Yeah.
And thank you and through you to briefly summarize this memo. At their meeting, uh, on May eleventh, uh, the Kirkland Lake Police Services Board received correspondence from a resident citing safety concerns regarding motor vehicle accidents occurring on Foss Lane. The board recommended that council investigate the roadway standard and design for safety reason. The local OPP detachment provided data for the last twenty years, which outlines a description of occurrence at Foss Lane. Uh, in relation or directly relating to or vis-à-vis the citizens cited concerns surrounding the impaired driving. Uh, the town's Public Works Department identified that the roadway meets the minimum lane standards. However, the absence of the shoulder makes the lane feel very narrow. Uh, if it is the will of council to act upon the recommendation of the Kirkland Lake Police Services Board's request for a review of Foss Lane, the town's Public Works Department are prepared to provide a report to council with detailed options based on their finding. With my comment.
Yeah. That's one. All in favor?
Okay. Um, one is moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that memorandum number twenty twenty-two CLK fifteen entitled Kirkland Lake Police Services Board Recommendation Foss Lane be received. And finally, that council direct that a site inspection be conducted at Foss Lane and a further report be prepared identifying options for remediation in the standard design of Foss Lane.
All in favor? Motion carry. Six point two. Vesting properties, tractor, passenger.
So, property, put it over here. I mean, we, 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 we put seven jacktails, seven properties up for jacktail. First sixteen. Five of them actually were sold. There's two remaining properties which. Done, that'd be Queen Street and Forest Street. Um, on the final page, that will flood, you'll see the breakdown, the actual cost taxes and cost associated with properties that are recommending for rich. Um, you have an option, of course, not to vest the properties. Keep the properties as is, in case it. Taxes and penalties or. Um, or we can vest it. The town's use or for your space. Uh, there is one, they do have one comment in the June twenty-first meeting. We bring more detailed report about the results of the five properties that were actually sold. Proceeds, costs and stuff. Maybe just brought forward, our own. Question?
I love. This property, is it not true that, uh, school taxes also collect on the properties? And our town actually pays the tax on the properties, if it's not vested?
Yeah, I should recover, so we have, if we do invest, we're gonna at least get that, like some of the school taxes. We, we need our own time to screen the cost associated. Best we can profit, putting them off the jacktail. Uh, but we do recover the school time that we have been given. That's true. That's true of all, all seven properties.
Yeah, thank you.
Or councillor White?
Well, when you talk to the arm, that's the next step of these properties, are you adding to the surplus plan? Or is it going to be made around the way, I guess?
Yeah, typically it doesn't, we, we don't have any. Reaction from public works that they have any use for the land itself. Yeah, they'll work for sale of some.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
Um, thank you very much for the report. Um. We'll wait for the, uh, the, uh, less meaning for the detail of the properties that, uh, were sold. Uh, my question will be. Uh, what do revenue that we sell? Have we strained that and we've restrained revenue?
Yeah.
I'll, I can wait till the next meeting back.
Well, I don't want to answer it generally, you can.
Thank you.
Um, typically it's not truly revenue, but it is, what happens is collection of an outstanding debt. So we have these five properties, six or seven, so. Uh, what happens is to set these payable, now pay off, we have cash flow that comes in. Um, there is in theory a potential for having a hit to your bottom line, to your budget. And that's through a recovery through the bad debt. So every year we make an estimate to say taxes are, or if we have to adjust for an increase in those bad accounts or something like that. There's, there's an actual line in the budget for that. So if you have a very good year collecting, yes, you would have some kind of recovery of revenues because bad debts are not normal. Um, but it, it doesn't directly go to a revenue account. Production, but people.
Yes.
Moved by councillor Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by councillor Patrick Adams. Be it resolved that report number twenty twenty-two FIN zero zero eight entitled, uh, vesting properties tax sale of March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two be received and that council authorize the vesting of twenty Queen Street and seven Park Street in the town of Kirkland Lake. And finally, that the municipal taxes be written off once the properties have been vested.
All in favor? Motion carry. Uh, six point six. Disconnecting from work policy, but then Bill, or, sorry, Stephanie, Bill. HR.
Thank you, and for the members of council. Um, to summarize this memo, I was once played a paper fire. In accordance to the Women's Affairs Act, the Bill twenty-seven, all employers with more than twenty-five employees are required to establish a written policy regarding practices and expectations on disconnecting from work. Connecting from work is important to an individual's wellbeing and helps create and sustain a healthy work-life balance. The policy has been established to support employee wellness, minimize the sense of sources of stress and ensure that employees feel that they can just get from their work outside of their regular working hours. Um, highlighted information is that the policy has been reviewed by the senior management team. We have looked at sample policies and input was taken from Alvin County, HR cover, HR download and the AMCTO. But because we are a municipality and are expected to provide services to our community twenty-four hours a day and seven days a week, there will be some exceptions to being able to fully disconnect, such as those that are on call and direct communication who are required to be on call or have standby by nature of their position. Um, and administration is still able to contact employees regarding shift coverages and, and or emergency.
So, councillor.
Yeah, um. Do you know it's all, I'm sure, that there's this. Extremely stressful for any employee, no matter what business. And currently, we do have employees that are under that situation. Um. If we not have in our system people who could be on call, so these people that are on call all the time, could not be on call all the time. I know a number of years ago, this was a problem with fire department. And they brought in a deputy fire chief all the time, still a fire chief without being on call all the time. Uh, we still have positions like that within the town. Um, and I don't, don't see that in this framework. Or maybe it's outside this framework, but it's, uh, it's extremely stressful and I, I think it could be addressed and maybe it doesn't have to be costly, but maybe in our day-to-day operations, uh, someone could be appointed so that we don't have people on call all the time. Thank you.
Moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. Be it resolved that memorandum number twenty twenty-two HR zero zero three entitled Disconnecting from Work Policy be received. And that council hereby approve the disconnecting from work policy. And finally, that Corp twenty twenty-two zero zero five Disconnecting from Work Policy be inserted into the corporate policy manual.
All in favor? Motion carry. Item eight point seven, the fifty and all. Motion. Um, respect that.
Thank you, councillor White, council. You have a fairly robust package that definitely. Bogging plant that is recommended to twenty-four municipalities around the district. You may remember, it's been a couple of years now since we have had the legislation requirement to continue to take the bogging plant. The council gave direction to staff to work under the offices of DSA, the DUC. We're doing a one plan for twenty-two municipalities that are represented by the DSA and the municipality. Because tomorrow you can catch the area. So this project has been worked on for a number of months. Um, one of the things that is very interesting about this project is it is to be a multi-sectoral approach. So it's not meant to be an approach just by law enforcement, which is where safety seems to come from in the past. This approach is to be working with representatives from mental health, from education, from municipalities, from community and social services and children and youth services. And that's actually legislating the act that that's the approach that must be taken. We do have the flexibility to work with our neighboring municipalities on a plan. And that was the approach that the federal court made to. This seemed to be a very good approach because we have many similarities with our neighbors in the area of Tamiskamang. And there was a lot of cost savings by doing it as a regional approach. Once the consultant was hired to complete the approach, a, an oversight committee was created. And that has the consultant as well as four various members. So we had a representative from DSA, a representative from the Tamiskamang Health Unit, and a representative from the two largest communities, which are just right, that being Kirkland and Tamiskamang Shore. After the advisors, sorry, after the oversight committee was struck, then a an advisory committee was struck as well, which was multi-sectoral. So we ensured that all of the various areas that were legislated were approached, as well as we needed extended invitations to inform many folks. So we had community, we had business, we had agency, we had all kinds of organizations. One-on-one interviews were conducted by the consultants. And then that was, that was, um, assisted with two half-day training sessions and learning sessions. So that we can come up with draft priorities. This concluded with a presentation on May twenty-sixth, that was for all mayor and council in the district. Uh, I believe there were about probably thirty-six members present at that presentation. And that presentation was to review the draft plan, ask questions and provide feedback. So a copy of that presentation was included in your package for those that weren't able to attend. And we're now at the next steps, which are acceptance and adoption of the plan and transitioning into implementation. Moving to implementation, which in my opinion is one of the most important parts. We do have to identify a plan lead. Ideally, we'll have a plan lead that has uh, the ability to work district-wide, so it probably would be one municipality. So the agencies that it probably would make most sense to be the DSA or Tamiskamang Health Unit. They've spoken quite a bit about taking on the role as a plan lead. The plan lead would then be responsible, ultimately determine how do you roll out the plan. So as you've noticed in the plan, um, we've got six priority areas that were identified. So there's health and wellbeing, and that's the things right from your primary healthcare, mental health addictions, recreation, culture, being active. There's housing, and that's another big one. So these are, these are big, these are big things. Housing moves from affordable housing for every single person. It goes right into transitional housing for someone who now no longer wants to live in a house. They might be a, um, a, a, a single older adult who doesn't want to have to go along and have to, who wanted sheltered, you know, all the time. But they're not ready for senior care by any means. So it's a transitional housing. There may be some seniors that require some assistance, but not on here. So these are all holding reasons. Um, shelters, obviously, and homes. In terms of women and economy, looking at education, children training, having income stability and having digital inclusion. We still have areas in our district that don't have great access to. Addressing poverty, social services, childcare, transportation, and one that we hear a lot of food insecurity. And I think we're all realizing that the constitutes is really inhibiting our, our ability to get exactly where we want. Community safety, which is what we typically think of as safety. It can go right from racism and discrimination and going to human trafficking, it can even go into road safety. And then another one that a lot of people showed a lot of interest in, especially when we have five hundred surveys done by members in the region and they felt that it was over five hundred, they felt the response rate was fabulous. A lot of people identify environmental stewardship and climate change, which surprised some of us. We didn't realize this was as important to the community, we made sure that was covered. So those six areas are the ones that are the pillars for Tamiskamang. So if you compare this to a, to the DSA, one we defined from another municipality, it may have some similarities, it may have complete differences. This is what community surveys, the focus groups, the advisory committee and the steering committee came up with, just to help with the consultant. So, I'll take it back. Uh, this, this has been a long time coming, it's a very new plan. The main thing that we, where we're going with it, what, to me, one of the main things is, is the implementation. You've got your six pillars. There's a number of examples of action items that could be achieved in the plan. This is just level one first step. This is what the group, he thought it was the most important at the time this plan was written. One month, two months, six months, now they may change. We know we still have gaps and there's many more areas we can add in. This is a living document. If you put too many steps in the plan, we won't get much done. If you don't put any in, I don't know if we know our way forward. So it was trying to get a balance of what are the action items that could fulfill the pillars. If we don't have an implementation plan, this is a lot of time and effort and it's gonna go on the shelf. It's important that we figure out how do we make sure this happens. So the consultants have asked that we bring, that each of us that have bring to council uh, or that the council, uh, the people that attended the training session will bring it back to their respective councils and look at, first of all, adopting the plan. So that's a legislative requirement that we adopt the plan. And second of all, that we discuss or consider in principle, um, allocating dollars on an annual basis to ensure that the plan can get. Um, allocating dollars on an annual basis to ensure that the plan can get. Um, actions, contractions, and then it actually comes to these. There's a couple of different ways it can be done. So it could, we could self fund. So if we were to self fund, we would probably have to hire an individual at whatever rate of pay to implement I V in the plan. To me, the downfall of that is it's fairly expensive. There is going to be duplication of service because someone in our net need range community is going to be doing almost the same thing. And I just don't think that an individual working for a municipality will be able to have the same achievements as someone who's working for a municipal. The other thing we could do is we could choose not to allocate dollars for it. There's a, in the future, there's a bit of a risk there because the solicitor general has proposed a regulatory requirement. To include the review of the plan within four years of adoption of the plan. So if we don't allocate the dollars and the regulatory review is passed. And we haven't done anything, we're going to be kind of scrambling because we haven't chosen to implement the activity plan. So with a lot of discussion, um, they've, they've, they've come up with a bit of a table that gives you a representation of what the cost could be. So this council has already contributed uh, over seven thousand dollars through this year's capital budget that's already been passed to complete the plan. We believe we're going to start to implement the plan at some point in twenty twenty two, if all things go well. So if it happens in September, that's four months left in the year. The cost to this municipality based on the apportionment that D staff does, and there is a chart in there, would be seven thousand dollars. So that would be an additional seven thousand dollars that would have to get paid this year. In speaking with our C O, we would be able to fund this through our current offering budget, but we're not asking for more dollars. We're asking for the ability to use dollars within our budget for this purpose. In the future, there is a monetary value to move along with it. And they, they kind of decided to do a low and a high, so it probably range between eighteen thousand and thirty thousand, that is showing a new catch. Not asking for a commitment to any, any real specific dollars tonight. Looking for an agreement in principle that the community should look at being able to fund the implementation. That will continue to look for funding dollars. All municipalities across the province are saying, okay, province, you legislated that we have to do this plan. You haven't given us any money to do it. So. Municipalities are asking the government for money, we'll continue to look for money so that we do not step in. Um, I guess that's it.
So Bonnie, first of all, for the part of our advisory council. For this uh, congratulations on all of that, it's very, very terrible. And uh, I think a quick admission is that uh, our community is faced with, so uh, well done. And I'm sure council will reflect this. Any further comments on council? Counselor Ivanov?
Yeah, I agree with you, Mayor Ackson, but Bonnie did an amazing job. I, implementation is going to be. I mean, if you talk to seven thousand, you've got to be looking at. Multi thousands, a million maybe, I don't know what it is, implement and get this done, it's a huge, huge task. I serve as supportive, I serve as supportive, I don't know how you're going to fund it, I can't sense your jobs, it's going to be important.
Counselor Moon?
My concern is that. From the license, the order of spending, the total amount of funding, the. You know, all these agencies, the hospital, they're already there in our community. Providing us with safety community. And now we're going to spend upwards of thirty thousand dollars depending on. And I, and I'm not, I mean, I'm not being negative to the plan. Because I want safety too. I just want to know where, like. Uh, where are eighty one thousand or a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars is gone?
Yeah, two words, two counts, Owen. It is primarily defined with one full time position. So none of the agencies that were at the table felt that they had staff that could implement the plan. So yeah, there's a number of things that, if you look at what does the municipality already do, there's some small snippets. We don't do much in many of those areas. They felt that if they did not have a plan lead, that the plan would sit on the shelf because everyone is stretched so thin. That they can't say, oh, can you just please do this? That was what collectively around the table here. And so it's, it's one full time salary as well as a very small portion of someone to supervise them.
Would this just be an extra work, a network?
No, so this is, this is something that you can decide on external to the annual bill.
Okay.
They use the same method of allocating it for the municipality that for the second largest, so we have. Still, but it, it has to be comfortable.
So that's one person that wrote it in twenty four?
Yes, yes.
I'm glad I'm not going to be that person.
And, and it is over the years, so there's no deadline, get the plan down, fix my back, would be as far as I know, if possible. And there's some things that are well beyond, I mean, we'd have to look at higher levels of government to fund some of the housing issues or any issues, I mean, they're, they're huge.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. Uh, this is a very interesting document and we are. Forward, uh, and I feel this is a full competing pillars that are here. Uh, I'm going to speak to the implementation, my experience and in that. Uh, when it comes, it comes to stuff like this, uh, implementation would be the key. Let's focus, would be the key. Uh, looking for a report here, what index, anyways. That would tell us if we're making a headway or not making a headway. And my suggestion would be, uh, that to include, uh, people of best interest. You know, I, I, I've been to many community, uh, interviews and what happened about. Uh, that's the poverty and we don't have any poor person there to share their experience. When you're talking about mental health, you know, anybody of mental health was trying to share that, so. I would, like, this is a good idea, but when it comes down to the implementation, I think all stakeholders must have the information. And I know they're very competing, everybody wants my price from your, but not for that, is. Get a lot of stakeholders around the table so that you can make a valuable contribution, uh, to the implementation. Thank you.
Counselor Moon?
Um, we want to get reports back on progress. Um, so that the public knows, the press knows that we're not just spending money on a plan that looks really good and we hired somebody. Okay, that's great because I think it's important that we let the right peers know that we're making progress. You know, it's a great plan and hopefully it goes well.
The intent is to form a measurement system, so they're actually um. Grading or marking based on the different areas in the action items. And to do a definite review after one year and then determine, does it make sense that you go maybe every twenty four months? Or does it still make sense to go twelve months? Because we know these are big, like, we're not going to check out boxes in three months, it's going to be. But there definitely is the report back. And at any time, any councilor, if this would have the opportunity to say, no, I'm going to pull back, so you're not making a commitment. Into eternity, you're making a commitment year by year. And if this council or future council felt that. The, um, the way of being tackled wasn't satisfying your needs, you would have the ability to stay at any hour. We definitely want to use. And we may have more legislation as time goes on, so we, we just have to determine how we fulfill this department.
Moved by Counsel Eugene Ivanov, seconded by Counsel Casey Owens, be it resolved that report number twenty twenty two C S O O nine entitled community safety and wellbeing plan. Adoption be received and that the Timiskaming District Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan as attached to the report be adopted. And finally, that council approve in principle an annual contribution for a community safety and wellbeing plan resource. Based on the current apportionments by the District of Timiskaming Social Services Administration Board, resulting in a district wide funding approach.
Hold on a favor. Motion, Terry. Item six point eight, property standards. Good going. Welcome, Luke.
Uh, for this council, I would like to present the report, uh, the property standard bylaw. The property standard bylaw and the local legislation, the government, the ongoing mission of implementing the town. To improve clarity and to improve consistency in the application of the regulations on the property standard bylaw. An update is recommended to address two main deficiencies, the specifics of the language used in regulations. And the standard enforcement procedure. The goal of this update is to remove as much interpretation as possible from the property standard bylaw. So staff and members of the public can work towards bringing every building in the community into compliance with the minimum standard that is in the property standard bylaw.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Moon?
Yes, I want to commend you, anything you can do to reduce the. Confusion and hard feelings in the community is most welcome by this counselor. And I'm sure probably by our C O and mayor and the rest of council. So, um, thank you very much and I appreciate it.
Moved by Counsel Eugene Ivanov, seconded by Counsel Patrick Adams, be it resolved that report number twenty twenty two D V zero twenty two entitled property standards bylaw update be received. And finally, that council hereby approve the updates to the property standards bylaw and direct that the proposed bylaw as presented be brought forward for three readings. At the June twenty first, twenty twenty two meeting. There is a motion on the floor moved by Counsel Eugene Ivanov, seconded by Counsel Patrick Adams. Be it resolved that the last paragraph of the recommendation be substituted to the following. And finally, that council hereby approves that the updates to the property standards bylaw. Um, approved the updates to the property standards bylaw and directed the proposed bylaw as presented be brought forward for three readings. As a July thirteenth, twenty twenty two meeting. That's to provide for sufficient notice of the change.
Hold on a favor. Motion, Terry. Thank you, Luke, and welcome, Patrick Adams. Item seven, consideration notice of motion, no notice.
No, this is not notices of motion.
Interruption, reading and consideration by law.
Moved by Counsel Rick Owen, seconded by Counsel Eugene Ivanov. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second and third time. Numbered to pass, signed by the mayor and clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty two forty four being a bylaw to appoint a building inspector and property standards officer.
Hold on a favor. Motion, Terry.
Moved by Counsel Patrick Adams, seconded by Counsel Stacy White, be it resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second and third time. Numbered to pass, signed by the mayor and clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty two forty five being a bylaw to adopt Timiskaming District Joint Compliance Audit Committee Terms of Rights.
Hold on a favor. Motion, Terry. Question from council. Counselor Moon?
So I have a question. Um, this past year, uh, we have been preparing identifying the purpose data collection and communication of results. Twenty two.
Okay, moved by Counsel Stacy White, seconded by Counsel Rick Owen, be it resolved that council receive the question reportable traffic radar signs in administration's response for information. And finally, that council directed a report be prepared identifying the purpose, data collection and communication of results. Of the town's portable traffic radar signs at the June twenty first, twenty twenty two regular meeting of council.
Hold on a favor. Motion, Terry. Uh, when we can notice this. Counselor Owen?
Counsel Adams?
Oh, Adam, sorry.
Yep, uh, looking for reconsideration of flag, poll banner and announcements, protocols, policy, corporation, twenty twenty zero two six.
If the county council, I don't like also what she's asked. Uh, that staff investigate the painting of crosswalks for national recognition such as pride or missing or murdered indigenous individuals. If, if, if Patrick had that.
Um. Um, this, sorry. Through you to Counsel White, there's no debate to be permitted at the notice of motion stages, just to provide for notice. Once the debate commences for the consideration of the notice of motion at the next meeting, you can include same in the recommendation. Okay?
Unless you want to.
Yes, but we don't have a pilot, policy on it. Um, you can ask them if they have any report.
No. Counselor Moon?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I'm speaking with the right, the right, the right, any of the, the notice of motion.
Uh huh, yes.
Okay. I will cause following motions to be moved at the June twenty first regular council meeting. Staff be directed to prepare status and update report on the Swastika Silver Line project. And presented at the next council meeting.
So. Your Worship, Counsel Owen? Are you looking for direct, are you looking to reconsider a, a decision of council? Because that's what the purpose of notice of motion is for.
Okay, I'll drop the motion, motion, and I'll talk to C O directly and, and I'll hold the record. Thank you.
There's no, there's no.
Counselor, a favor?
Thank you. Um, I don't want to do this, I'm. I'm like all the features, separate issues and to mix them and get money. Offered and. But some, I was reminded this morning that because we sit around this table that our voice has just been more weak. That happened so, and we'll have. So last week I had the opportunity to practice a day with two students raising the flag. On one of the side poles of front of a French Catholic high school. Simple gesture. No man, very no media. Few students on. Put down the Franciscan flag. And the students placed it with, replaced it with the flag of price like supplied by the school board, French Catholic. I didn't participate in this because I'm gay. Nothing to do with that. Didn't participate in this because I happen to be on council. Didn't participate because I'm a high school teacher, I did it because it was the right thing to do. I was able to do this because the school board trustee brought forward a policy of inclusion that highlights the importance of acceptance, diversity within our school community. Not restrictions and limitations. So it was a privilege as an educator and a council to participate in a simple yet very powerful gesture. Thank you.
Thank you.
However, the policy there was about the organization, I don't know why, because I have five or four calls. Therefore, given the important issue of the council was the right place to put on in the card mark. I'm currently, we will place a dial hole of the price line on June sixteenth. I will also paint an every child manage flag, which is plenty of appropriate time to be used. Price line is being coordinated by the school.
I think that's a good start to make your work and make those are, that's true.
Yep.
Any other council report?
Yep. Uh, first of all, we want to get to mine, I think, for maybe that's what we need to begin. Um, I really don't know what the uh, bylaw policy is. I I I know we um say that preface where it's just friendly community to the park. Uh, and I believe we are the person in business person. But I just, I ran into a business, uh, a new business guy last week and uh apparently he indicated that I missed his grand opening of his business. That the invitation was sent to uh, to uh, to the town and I I I didn't know that, I didn't know that at all. Not to show what the policy is, was attending something like that, maybe comes out directly or not, but it didn't come to me directly. So my take on that would be that uh, you know, I I think we do a good job of welcoming big businesses, you know. We should apply the same thing welcoming small businesses too. Uh, I don't know what the again, party may have, uh, straightened this out a little on, I don't know what is there uh, as to any invitation to new businesses. Uh, but we should really be there. We should be there to welcome them and to say, ask them because we said we're a business friendly community and that's the one way to show it. So I I I I spoke to this new business guy in town, I said, well, listen, I'm going to bring it up to uh this forum here, I will not divert this name as this and I believe I discussed that with the mayor too, but I I think we should make something of a standard operating procedure to at least, at least when they touch this with us. Uh, we should at least have a representation to welcome them to our community. I I will make you this in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce, but that's what they do in other communities. Uh, I I like to have that uh, register and hopefully moving forward, uh, we'll be welcoming all the new business. And there many of them are coming in, they're opening up now, uh, little corner, little road and bill area and smaller in between. So we should be there to welcome this uh, new businesses uh, to our community. Thank you.
If I may comment, uh, it was an oversight. I didn't really. And I think what I put, not blaming people the administrative assistant at the time. And I did follow up with this gentleman and uh and I had a good chat with him, very likable individual and uh satisfied uh, uh, about concerns as as you mentioned, uh, about uh in open to business. I think we patched up uh, that also the Chamber of Commerce often uh will attend uh, a new business opening as well. And I'll bring that up with them as well. But certainly we we support new business and I agree with you, it should be mandatory. I want to, some uh, representative council that'll show up and congratulations on the, on the open. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, and one more thing, uh, here is uh, let's move back to the C A O reporting, uh attend us at Phenom, uh, and I know Council Stacy White, that she will be attending a um conference in the future. Uh, I'm not sure what is it. Uh, I see a lot of uh, councilors have business cards, but some of us, I I don't have any, so I, I don't know. When it goes places like that, they all try to introduce themselves with the business card, but who knew? I don't know, a lot of business card. So I'm not too sure what that, something I need to look into. I need to see I'm going to place like that, then I want a business card to respond back. Maybe she does, I don't know. I know I do, so.
I think what happened in the middle of the year and it just.
Oh, oh, yeah.
I apologize. Your worship, if I may, I'm, uh, if I may, response through uh, his worship to to Counselor Shaba. Uh, in terms of uh, when we receive invitations for in any form or from whom. Um, anything that is circulated at to my office is circulated to you every Friday through the council weekly. If it's not received by me, um, then I don't have any other mechanism to to know if there's something going on out there. So I think when his worship identified that the chamber typically, you know, circulates new businesses with the grand openings, I think that would be the ideal um, platform circulated to council. There is a motion for these, unless there's somebody else that knows.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want to ask if there's any other reports? Uh, to receive, yeah. Do you want to ask if there's any other reports?
Would you prefer to report?
Okay. Moved by Council Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Council Patrick Adams, be it resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be received.
Motion carried.
Do you want to reassess me before we read the call session motion? It'll be five or ten.
Whatever.
Okay. Good. Okay, recess. Resess. Don't need a motion.
Okay.
Okay. Council Adams, we're just going to recess for ten minutes.
Yeah.
Moved by Council Raj Chaba, seconded by Council Stacy White. Be it resolved that council adjourned camera pursuant to section two thirty nine two of the Municipal Act two thousand and one as amended at five fifty two P M for the following reasons. Item thirteen point one being first personal matters of an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board. Advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose and a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations. Item thirteen point two being a proposed pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. Item thirteen point three being a proposed pending acquisition or disposition of land by by the municipality or local board. Item thirteen point four being a proposed pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board and a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to negotiations.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Okay, we are now streaming.
Item fourteen, matters from closed session.
Okay, uh, moved by Council Casey Owens, seconded by Council Eugene Ivanoff, be it resolved that council reconvene an open session at six fifty three P M. I just read that.
Okay. Well, all in favor? My matters from closed session. If some potential, items. So any declaration of pecuniary interest? Not noted?
No, no.
Both Adams. Uh, I think it's still item four point four, employee of an equal eagle. Okay. Confirmation by law?
Yep, we have matters, uh, so we have matters fourteen point one. So fourteen point one is request to purchase surplus land at seven seven six, the government road west. Moved by Council Rick Owen, seconded by Council Patrick Adams, be it resolved that report number twenty twenty two D V eighteen entitled request to purchase surplus land at seven seven six government road west be received. And the council approved the sale of land at seven seven six government road west, Teresa Ernie, for the amount of eight thousand dollars. And then council authorized the mayor municipal clerk to execute the offer to purchase and all appropriate sale documents as may be required. And finally, the council authorized the bylaw of sale by, uh, sorry, the sale of property be given three readings on June twenty first, twenty twenty two.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Item fourteen point two is request to purchase surplus land at thirty one Kirkland Street West, moved by Council Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Council Stacy White. Be it resolved that report number twenty twenty two D V nineteen entitled request to purchase surplus land at thirty one Kirkland Street West be received. And the council offer a lease for the north part of thirty one Kirkland Street West to Charles Dubay. And then council authorized the mayor municipal clerk to execute a lease agreement and all appropriate documents as may be required. And finally, then council authorized the bylaw of the lease agreement be given three readings on June twenty first, twenty twenty two.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Going to put Counselor Adams in the waiting room. Well, I'll come and get you. There we go. Okay. Item fourteen point three, an equal eagle request to purchase Archer Drive Industrial Park. Moved by Council Rick Owen, seconded by Council Raj Chaba. Be it resolved that report number twenty twenty two D V seventeen entitled an equal eagle request to purchase Archer Drive Industrial Park to be received. And the council approved the sale of those mining claims legally described as L one six five five five, L one six five five four, L one five seven five zero, L one five seven five two, L one six five eight nine, L one one eight eight two, L one six six one nine, L one six six nine one, and South Part of Mining Claim L one three five four, N F C six seven eight seven, identified as being of interest to an equal eagle to an equal eagle for the amount of eight hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars. Then council authorized the mayor municipal clerk to execute the offer to purchase and all appropriate sale documents as may be required. And finally, the council authorized the bylaw of the sale of the property be given three readings on the June twenty first, twenty twenty two meeting.
All in favor? Carried.
Thank you, Counselor Adams back. Now we're.
Confirmation.
Moved by Council Stacy White, seconded by Council Casey Owens, be it resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time numbered pass signed by the mayor clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty two forty six being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held June seventh, twenty twenty two.
All in favor? Very.
Moved by Council Casey Owens, seconded by Council Eugene Ivanoff, be it resolved that this regular meeting of council do now adjourn at six fifty seven P M.
All in favor? Motion carried.